Order the THPRD Board of Directors meeting for September 10th, 2025. Jessica, would you please call roll?
Barbie Minor.
Tia Ping.
Here.
Alfredo Moreno.
Here.
Miles Palacios.
Here.
Pranay Patel.
Yeah.
All right, we did not have any action resulting from executive session, so we are right through that part. And now I would, I would like to welcome those who are in attendance this evening for our, our proclamations. And I'm glad to turn it over to our Equity and Engagement Manager, Lulu Bayasteros, for introductions. Por favor, Lulu.
Good evening to the board, staff, and guests. Tonight, we have two important proclamations. National Latina and Hispanic Heritage Month, National Preparedness Month. We are excited to be here tonight to present in a new format for honoring proclamation months. In addition to providing written proclamations, we wanted to build together what we've done in the past when community members have come to these meetings and sharing more about why the proclamation matters and how we collaborate together. Rather than simply reading the proclamation, we wanted to create space for voices and lived experiences. This month is the first time we're honoring this way, and it is truly meaningful to me personally to begin during Latina and Hispanic Heritage Month. As a Latina, it is an honor to introduce to you Maria Luisa Piñón, the Lead of Sosichali Wellness and Art Center. Since 2022, we have partnered with Maria Luisa to bring meaningful cultural programming to the community, such as yanquisli, cultural market, the purépecha ball game, Sosichali ceremony, and El Festival del Semáchuchí. Maria Luisa is a gifted painter, teacher, community advocate, and dancer who brings heritage to life through art, movement, and ceremony. In 2019, she founded Sosichali, which means House of the Flowers in Nahuatl, a nonprofit dedicated to reclaiming and sharing ancestral knowledge, promoting wellness, and celebrating Mexican and indigenous traditions. Sosichali's mission is rooted in creating spaces where people can reconnect with culture, honor ancestral wisdom, and find healing through art, dance, and community. It is my pleasure to welcome Maria Luisa to share with us tonight.
Hi.
Can you hear us okay?
Yes, thank you. So, hi, everyone. So, my English is so broken, really. My Sansai is good for communication, but maybe not for talking in front of other people. But I think my best way to talk for my culture and my organization is Spanish. So, my apologies, I prefer to do this. So, how Lulu say? Mi nombre es Maria Luisa Piñón, and estoy muy feliz de estar aquí el día de hoy. Sosichali es un sueño, es el sueño de una escuela. Sosichali, la traducción de Nahuatl es la Casa de las Flores. Mis abuelos creían que cada palabra que decimos es una flor. Cada acción que hacemos es una flor. Cada arte que podemos transmitir a otros es una flor. Y que la dejamos como herencia de lo que fuimos y lo que hicimos durante el transcurso de nuestra vida en este plan. Y por eso quisimos honrar ese nombre para nuestra organización. Estoy muy contenta de haber conocido aquí a Lulu, este, porque nos alentó. La realidad es que ella fue quien nos alentó a trabajar con THPRD. Estamos muy contentos del trabajo que hemos hecho juntos, de la paciencia que tiene esta organización para personas como yo. Estamos aquí en nuestra tierra, pero entre comillas inmigrantes, que tenemos que luchar día a día por mantener nuestras raíces, nuestra cultura, y nuestra conexión, sobre todo en los jóvenes. Para Sosichali es muy importante la juventud. Nosotros ya lo hicimos como pudimos, pero estamos aquí para dejar esas flores para nuestros futuros jóvenes. Entonces, creo que THPRD está haciendo un gran paso, y les agradezco que nos vean en un país donde no queremos ser vistos, que hayan organizaciones como estas, que nos vean, nos den los espacios, las facilidades para hacer este tipo de eventos que culturalmente no son realistas para muchos, pero para nosotros son la esencia misma de nuestro pueblo y de nuestra sangre. Crecí con abuelas, bisabuelas, y una tatarabuela. Y crecí con dos abuelos y dos bisabuelos. Fui afortunada, así que me enseñaron muchas cosas que ahorita es muy difícil que alguien de mi edad las crea, si no las vio, si no las escuchó, si no se las sembraron. Entonces, eso es lo que nosotros queremos dejar para nuestros jóvenes en Sosichali. Ojalá que ustedes, todos ustedes, nos sigan viendo, nos sigan apoyando. Y Sosichali no es la única organización que hay en Oregon. Habemos muchos. Les invito a ver alrededor, a los compañeros que también trabajan en esto. Y pues, el corazón para ustedes, no, de mi parte, y de mis compañeros que no pudieron estar el día de hoy aquí, pues agradecidos, y ojalá que nos sigan dando la oportunidad de trabajar juntos, de crear historia. Porque realmente hacer historia de la hispanidad en este país es muy difícil, pero sobre todo dejar una cimiente fuerte, dejar semillas de buenas flores. Eso es lo que estamos tratando de hacer, y todo es solo con respeto para el país que nos tiene aquí, porque somos parte de él, somos seres productivos, y pues queremos hacer algo bonito para una generación más unida.
And gonna share back a little bit of everything that Maria Luisa said, which was very beautiful. Sosichali came from a dream, and it's a house of flowers, because as ancestors and grandparents, shared with Maria Luisa, who was very lucky to grow up with many grandparents and elder in, in her family. She got to learn how each petal, each seed counts. So, the main focus of Sosichali is going to be to promote culture, but there's a high focus on youth, because she was very fortunate to live through this process at home. Now in her new home, however, youth sometimes need to rescue those experiences and that knowledge that she was lucky enough to be handed down from her ancestors and grandparents. And then also sharing a thank you to THPRD, because they think it's an open space that where we lead with curiosity, that we have supported organizations like Sosichali. But there's also an invitation to invite other organizations, that they're not the only ones here. So, there was a big thank you a couple of times for having felt that they were seen as a group, as a community, and that we're inviting folks to celebrate in THPRD spaces. Creo que lo hice bien. I think I got it. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here. How do we, how do you, do you want to do a photo here? Is that okay?
Tenemos un regalo para ti.
Let's do it.
Síganme los guays.
Thank you. I wish my daughter was here to be able to help her father, who speaks at about a second grade level, first grade level, to translate. She's a fifth grader at Article E Spanish Immersion School. She could have helped me out, but thank you for your words. Let's see, we are going to move next to National Preparedness Month, and John Wheeler, welcome.
Good act to follow. Appreciate sharing this month with the, the Potini and Hispanic Recognition Month, so. Thank you. Good evening, board members. I'm John Wheeler. I'm the manager of Washington County Emergency Management, and I'm also serve as the Director of the Emergency Management Cooperative of Washington County, which is Washington County's forum for countywide multi-agency disaster planning and preparedness. Thanks for having us here today. I should also introduce, I'm here with Courtney Anne in the plaid shirt over there. I, she has herself done a lot of project work with THPRD.
You got, she's got an audio, audio here. There we go. Okay, sorry, sir.
Somebody else might be doing the proclamation here. But, yeah, but, yeah, to complete that, Courtney, again, has done a lot of project work in partnership with the, the district. And so, great to have you here today, joining me. But thanks for having us here, and also thanks, thank you for promoting National Preparedness Month. Personal and family emergency preparedness is becoming more critical, I think, each year as the frequency and intensity of disasters increase in our community in the Pacific Northwest and nationwide. Fortunately, a relatively quiet summer for us so far, knock on wood with wildfires. But we should not forget that not that long ago was COVID and the Labor Day wildfires, the heat dome, and other incidents that have occurred. So, the focus that September's National Preparedness Month gives us is, is really good at, at, and invaluable in providing focus on personal and family and organizational preparedness. So, we, we appreciate your action today in this, in this proclamation. I wanted to take the opportunity with your proclamation to recognize the district's outstanding partnership with Washington County Emergency Management and other emergency management partners, and to thank you for your contributions to the preparedness and resilience of Washington County. To quote your, your proclamation specifically, I do want to state this one out loud, because I think it's powerful, which is THPRD honors and values our role, your role, as the public service provider, as a public service provider and community partner. And furthermore, we are committed to THPRD doing our part to serve the community during emergency events. And I'll say that we at County Emergency Management and amongst our partners can testify that, that definitely in the last several years, the district has clearly demonstrated this commitment to that, and it's having an impact. In the past years, a priority of our program has been to build our capability to stand up, specifically disaster sheltering. Our experience with the Labor Day wildfires and other fires has underscored the need for that. Also, the Cascadia Subduction Zone earthquake, when that eventually strikes, may have us, you know, require up to tens of thousands of people who will require shelter and care and that kind of thing. And we need, we need to be ready for this. Obviously, THPRD has, has a collection of great public facilities and open spaces that are currently community hubs during Blue Sky Days, as we call them. And, and, and as, as locations that are visible and heavily used by community members, these are great locations for uses temporary shelters, cooling or clean air centers, logistics hubs, or other uses that may, we may have during dark sky days. But more than just having these facilities, THPRD has, has really, beyond that, really been a problem solver in our work with us and with our partners and the Emergency Management Community in Washington County in preparing for emergencies. You've provided space for our shelter training and exercises, provided, you provided a, a storage space for us, for our shelter supplies, participated actively in our planning efforts, and taken steps to improve your own resilience of your facility so that they can be ready for emergency uses. You've provided a location for Red Cross Shelter Supplies, Shelter Trailer, and Resilience Hub Supplies, also for cache of supplies that was obtained by the Oregon Chinese Coalition through a state grant. And the district was a partner additionally in, in the development of the Multi Jurisdictional Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan that we completed in 2023, and that we'll be doing again here for our five-year renewal of that hazard mitigation plan. And also supporting your own, development of your own wildfire protection plan, and supporting our countywide community wildfire protection plan, which we're, is a project we're, we're getting close to completion. The district was also designated as a storm-ready community by the National Weather Service. Washington County followed you there. We, we were recently also designated as a, as a storm-ready community by the weather, by the Weather Service. The through line to a lot of this stuff is I, I do want to recognize specifically Mark Pierce, your Safety Services Manager, with, with your support and the support of your leadership. He's been instrumental in a lot of the things that I mentioned there. He's played a, a really substantial part in that. He's worked closely with Courtney from our office. Courtney leads our Mass Care and Shelter work, and she and Mark have really had a, a great collaboration on, on the many initiatives that I've mentioned here. So, in closing, we really appreciate the proclamation, your attention to, you know, promoting National Disaster Preparedness Month, and obviously your great partnership with us and the Emergency Management Community, and we look forward to collaborating with you further in the years to come. So, thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you for being here. All right, let's grab a photo with you, if you don't mind. Mark, you too, yes, sir.
Thank you so much.
You date it, that's for you.
That's for you.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for being here for that. How are we looking? We do not have any testimony submitted for tonight, so I'm going to move us along in the interest of time to Committee Liaison Updates. Board members, Miles is pounding his butt like a game show contestant.
Sorry, I was so excited. I was able to attend my first meeting of the Fiduciary Committee. It was really exciting. I was just having an informal conversation with Jared about getting some more training and learning more about the, the work of our, our committee members, of our, the teams that we work with, and just in general, the need for being vigilant about how we handle our dollars and take care of the community that we serve internally with our staff. And also just an incredible shout out to the team and for the incredible work that they've done in the last few years of really making sure that this is a priority. And, yeah, I'm really proud of the work that they have all done. So, excited to be a part of those conversations, excited to, to learn more, and to continue to be engaged. That is all for me.
Thank you, Miles. Who would like to go next?
I'll go.
Please.
Have a few things. First, and I, I posted this, but I just, on the record here, want to just take a moment and to thank staff. I know we're going to hear a little bit later about some highlights of summer. But as a parent with back-to-school kiddos, and though I did not have to do the back-to-back 10 weeks, what am I going to do to take care of my kids when school is out danced this year? I know the magnitude, and, and I know how mission-critical THPRD is over summer, from childcare to our summer concerts to the pools. And I just want to show tremendous gratitude for the hustle and bustle. And there's a lot of focus that's placed on, hey, we're back to school, but you know what? We just went through our time to shine, as I like to call it. So, wanted to start there and just thank staff for everything that y'all did to make summer such a success. I also had an opportunity, we've got our new committee appointment, so we did have our first audit committee, which is a first experience for me in this term. So, just kind of kicking off and understanding the process and welcoming new folks to, to the committee, and I'm excited and eager to learn more, especially in that area of our, our audit process and whatnot. So, reporting there. And then my other appointment is joining the Equity and Engagement Committee, and we held our first meeting as well and welcomed some new members. And I'm just so grateful for the open commitment and authenticity shown and demonstrated with our volunteers who want to come into this space and offer their lived experience and ways in which that we can continue to make sure that we're showing up for everyone in our community with equity in mind. And so, really excited to see how that work is going to continue to evolve and how this committee will shape and report back to the board as we continue to, to get ongoing there. And I think we'll be seeing a little bit later some of the work that we discussed with our revision to our equity statement. I think the last thing that I will share, just community-wide, though I was unable to attend in person, some, some local elected leaders held a press conference last week down in Portland City Hall. And I'd like to thank the local leaders who came together and signed on to a letter for House Bill 3565, which is a Block the Bombs Act. And so, from Congresswoman Bonamichi to State Senator Con Farm, Fellow Director Tia Ping, as well as many members on Beaverton City Council and Beaverton School Board, our local leaders. I think our community knows that I'm someone who centers the humanity of all people, and I think that humanity begins with not bombing folks. So, there's still time for others to, to sign on and to learn more. And I just want to thank my fellow elected leaders who have the courage and the dedication to step forward and to sign on to this so we can, can start to bind a resolution together. So, just want to offer the thanks and appreciation.
Yeah, I got to tour the Open Door Aloha Pods this time. And so, I just want to say just glowing things about the company that, that's run the thing. Everything was wonderful, that everything was very clean and quiet. And it was just a, a very good experience to be able to walk around and see how it integrates into the community. I have parks and facilities, which I will go to the first meeting next week. And so, that is all I have. Oh, I did want to say, sorry. I wanted to say that when, I want to thank staff for our big registration delay and action. I did get a lot of texts that morning that it happened, and I didn't get any texts of complaints for, after the resolution. So, I just want to say it's a big shout out to you guys for doing all the work and getting it and making sure that it was available the next day. And everybody was, who was freaking out about it, was very thoughtful about all the work that it takes. And there was no complaints or how could this happen or anything like that. So, I just want to thank you guys for the prompt response, and I know it was very stressful and a lot of work. So, thank you, staff, for doing.
Thank you. Pranay.
I just want to start by thanking Doug and Jessica helping me ramp up. This is my first in-person meeting, so thank you, including our IT services, who hooked me up with a lot of different things, so thank you. I did, I did visit the pods with Tia, and it was, and Alfredo was there as well. It was very insightful, and I'm looking forward to working with the board to help overall make some decisions around that. I do want to thank THPRD, being person of Indian origin. This is the first time ever, these are, these couple of weeks are festive weeks for us. And this is the first time ever that there is a festivity that is being hosted at THPRD, which is happening two weeks from now. So, I got a lot of excited emails, because there is more space, there is more room for people to come together. So, I, I got a lot of kudos about that and a lot of excitement about that. So, thank you, and thanks, thanks for helping me out.
Okay, thank you, and welcome, yeah, welcome, Pranay. It's very meaningful to have you on the board, and I know you're already off to a much faster start than somebody sitting in this chair. You're going to do great. I see Gina Labaco, I think, is on the Zoom, so, so she doesn't erase me. I do have to make sure I remind everyone that September 19th is the Twolon Hills Park Foundation Friend Raiser at the Jenkins Estate from 4:00 to 6:30. And under no obligation or joke, I, you all have heard me talk about the foundation. We are entering kind of a, kind of a critical time for the foundation in all the best ways, an opportunity time with the arrangement with the Portland Timbers, announcing that they are going to have a member of their, of their team joining the, the Board of Trustees. And we have an opportunity to really invest in the foundation, which can really help us extend the work that maybe our current budget won't always allow us to do to deepen that work. So, this is a great opportunity to really launch something special, I think. So, encourage everyone who's able to make it. And the other thing I just wanted to mention, yes, Latina Hispanic Heritage Month. I can, I'll, I'll try not to go on and on, but I think from my friend Lulu Bayasteros being up here and the work that's been done in the district, when I first ran for this office, some of the feedback I got was that this was not a place that does that very well or very, all that, all that great. And what I've seen in my, now, starting my fifth year, fills me with pride. So, thank you to, to staff, to former and current board members who have leaned into this work and had folks come in and bring these traditions from, from their grandparents, from their ancestors, and be able to pass them along all the way up here in Beaverton, Oregon, means a big deal. It is a big deal, honestly, to see our proclamation that we'll sign later tonight with Moreno and Palacios on it is also a big deal. It's cool. I think, contrary to some beliefs, Latino people are not a monolith. We, we don't really belong, frustratingly so, we don't belong to anyone, organization, or party, or person that speaks for everyone. We're very stubborn and confusing in that way. We're as diverse as this great country that we all love to call home. Things are not easy, as she mentioned. But I think during times when life is, is, creates more obstacles, creates more barriers than there should be. Somos seres resilientes, we're resilient. Nosotros sobrevivimos, survive. And nosotros prosperamos, so we will thrive. So, I'm just, yeah, very proud to be sitting in this chair, very proud of this whole, whole district and the work that you've done, and I much appreciate it from the bottom of my heart. So, with that, I will move us along to, smooth segue here to, oh, I, I would, agenda item rate. I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda. Looks like maybe Director Palacios.
Yeah. I move that the board approve the consent agenda as submitted.
I will second.
All right, we have a second. Jessica, would you please?
Barbie Minor.
Yes.
Pranay Patel.
Yes.
Tia Ping.
Yes.
Miles Palacios.
Yes.
Alfredo Moreno.
Yes. All right, consent agenda approved. Agenda item number nine, Legislative Update. Aisha and Kylie, welcome.
Thank you, board members. We have Kylie joining us right here, and we wanted to just give you an update on how this last session went. Lots of activities, lots, you'll see big numbers. We put up some big numbers here in, in Oregon. And so, we wanted to give you just the breakdown of how things played out, what we engaged on, how we fared. And so, we have Kylie, our state lobbyist, here to share with you some, some session information. So, I'll turn it over to her now.
Am I this button? Okay, did you want to cover some? Oh, yes.
Yep, I'll, I'll jump in. So, we do want to remind you of sort of what our legislative priorities going into the 2025 session were. We work with you to establish the legislative platform, and that is what guides all of the work that we do. So, you sort of preemptively tell us what, what should be important and what we should be talking to folks about. And we do have slightly different platforms for both the federal and the state level. So, there's activities that we're engaged on in the federal level that are consistent with our overall approach, but we have avenues that are available to us that way. And then we have a slightly different approach on the state side that Kylie carries out for us. On the federal side, we do engage with Smith Garson. They've been our longtime lobbyist, and we continue to work with them on things like gaining federal earmarks to do things like take care of air filtration and HVAC issues within aging buildings. So, we are in play on one of those, and we're also anxious to hear whether we will get funding for a wildfire mitigation strategy that we put forward. So, we shall see whether that all plays out. So we shall see whether that all plays out. So moving on to the next slide, on the federal side, there are annual opportunities for us to put forward proposals and asks for things. And so we have been moving through that process as we go. And we also have great connection to our granted administrator with the different funding opportunities that are filtered to us by our federal advocates. So now I'll turn it over to Kylie, who can talk about our specific platform related to, we've got something very strange happening with this, this presentation. We'll try to keep it in place, but these are the state priorities and Kylie will just quickly kind of move us through that discussion.
So those are the five state priorities that you guys have set and, and they direct our action in the, in the capital. So I'm not going to read through those because you're all very familiar with those. We've talked about those, we've decided on those. What I want to do tonight is this is my little run of show. I will not be going through the end of session report page by page because I know that it is just such a small little reading for you to have to do. So I appreciate that. I'm sure you read front to back more than once. So we'll do a high level look at the notable bills for THPRD. We'll go over our lobby day and then we'll talk about what's next. So these topics that are prioritized by leadership, we shared those at the beginning of session with you and gave updates as we went through session. And as you read through that list, everything saw some pretty significant progress, except for that last one, the transportation package. It did not fare well during the 2025 session. I'm going to talk a little bit more about that later in this presentation because we are currently actually in a special session about transportation funding. So we'll, we'll circle back to that. I want to focus on that number there, 3,466 bills introduced, which is a 16% increase over the last long session, which was an increase over the previous long session, which is an increase over, anyway, you get the picture. There's a lot of bills introduced and I've seen, so there are slightly different numbers depending on the source and depending on how we looked at them. But these are fairly accurate. So Miles, if you have updated, you just share, you please butt right in. What I wanted to talk about though is that, that's a lot of bills. It's a lot of bills to have hearings on. It's a lot of bills when you think about the percentage of those that were placeholders, which means that they are amended later to address a certain issue that, that may not be clear what it's for when it's first introduced. And so that can lead to, it leads to a lot of public hearings and it leads to proposed amendments. Noting the number of bills, the number of public hearings, the amount of public testimony that is now available and the people who want to offer that, that's a lot that can impact the public process, the legislative process and the timing of it. I put in the end of session report that I'm not sure, something feels like it's going to have to give, like there has to be some way of addressing kind of that, all those different pieces and inputs. I don't know what the answer is. The legislature did put forward a bill to try to limit the number of bills that could be introduced. Unfortunately, that bill didn't move, but also it would have only limited after you did the math to 3,400 bills. So that wouldn't have really impacted the total that we're talking about. But there does, we do need to have a serious conversation about the number of, of measures that are put forward and how we can make sure that we give the due deliberation to each one as we go through the process. So I just wanted to highlight that. And then for THPRD, at the height of the session, right before, like one of the major deadlines that kind of helps us see which bills are going to move forward. In the second half of session, we were tracking about 118 bills for THPRD and 26 of those that we are tracking actually passed. I will also say that this doesn't note that we are a member of ORPA, the Oregon Recreation and Parks Association, and they, they track even more bills, but some of them aren't necessarily pertinent to us to have to do with beaches or waterways or those kinds of things. So we are active and we monitor those as well from kind of a secondary position. Okay, so here are some of the notable bills. I just picked out these five. There are a lot more bills and if there's any questions on any of the other ones that we were tracking or that we cared about from the long, from a very, you know, efficient report that I put together, please let me know. But I wanted to start with 3209, which would raise RV registration fees. Those haven't been raised in 24 years. They are split between the Parks Department and County Parks exclusively for those two. We, they were able to be included in the transportation package in 2025. That did not go forward and unfortunately, they're not included in the proposal that's in front of the special session right now. We, I know ORPA worked with the bill sponsors to ask and to push for that. They reached out directly to the governor's office. There's also been talk with the co-chairs of the joint interim or the joint committee from the session about this registration fee. And they've actually said that we will try to get it worked into the next full funding package that's going to be discussed in the future. I wanted to highlight that because just even getting that fee increase into the 2025 package was significant. I mean, that was a win in and of itself because having additional fees added to that already complex package was pretty significant. And the fact that they've recognized that it needs to be included in any future conversations, also significant. So this next one is another unique success story that I'm going to, that I call it success. But House Bill 3505 had to do with residential fire sprinkler system SDC restrictions. The reason I'm calling that out is because it was the only SDC related legislation that passed during the session. And we've had really robust conversations about STCs in the past and the role they play for the district and the role they can play in the housing market and those kinds of things. And some of the ideas that have been floated before the session started, we're, we're not, we're pretty onerous or weren't the direction we would have liked to have seen them go. So the fact that only that one passed and not some of those other ones that would have been impactful was a, was a win. This next one is not a win, 3626, the micro mobility regulations. I wanted to make sure to call this out because THPRD's own Peter Swinton, Swinton was on the work group. We are incredibly thankful for that, thankful for the work and the time and the effort he put in to making that bill as good as it could be. It did die in the ways and means process, but we look forward to supporting an even more robust version of those regulations in the future. It's not going to go away. It's going to, there are going to be continued conversations on that front. And I did save some of the last, the best for last, Senate Bill 179 is a huge victory. That actually makes permanent the changes from the 2024 session to the recreational immunity statute, which is a huge win going into the session. We weren't even sure of how or what that would look like. And the fact that we're able just to make what we'd already done permit is, was really big. And we are a very active participant in that. This board, this staff gave testimony, had meetings, did advocacy this session, previous session. So huge kudos to all the work that went into that. And then the last one, I'm highlighting both because we did make progress, but also to note the impact that the board had through your lobby day. And we happen to have a very timely and fortuitous set of conversations around this bill. So Senate Bill 243 was a Community Safety Firearms Act. It included portions of Senate Bill 698 that had to do with local governments that could, could enact restrictions on concealed handguns in their, originally it was buildings and adjacent grounds. However, that bill is going through, is being developed, it was going through changes right when we were having our lobby day. And at the time that we were there, the definition of local government had been changed to not include special districts. So it would not allow THPRD to consider those kinds of restrictions in their public buildings and adjacent grounds. We shared those concerns with some key legislators, including Senator Reynolds, who'd been one of the bill sponsors, Senator Lieber, who was active in the conversation, and then House Majority Leader Representative Bowman. Again, another active participant. So while we were, we were successful in sharing our concerns, our priorities, why this was important to the district to be able to make those kinds of restrictions. We were able to get special districts added back to the definition. However, we did lose the adjacent grounds piece, but we have every hope to be able to revisit that in the future. So that's another one for our to-do list. There we go. So I want to move right into the lobby day because Senate Bill 243 was an example of the impact that the board had, like very, like in a very tangible way. So those are some of the offices that we were able to meet with on our lobby day. We provided updates on the board, the district projects, things like the West Side Trail segments and bridge and the replacement bond. We went through kind of our legislative priorities, but I think that Senate Bill 243 example is, is, is what we're, we're all about, why we do this. And I also wanted to say that the positive meetings that we have with legislators and the friendliness and the openness to which we have those meetings is because of THPRD, what you do, who you are. And I just wanted, again, big kudos to the board and staff because those are always such positive interactions and they're not always that way. And it's because of you and your work. So what's next? So we are in the ramp up for the short session. These are a list of interim legislative days. Those are public hearings where no action is taken, but they do information gathering on bill, bills that have just passed or bills that they want to introduce in the coming session. And those are also informed by the revenue forecasts. And I also put in there kind of when, if you're going to do a bill introduction for the short session, what that timeline looks like as well. A quick reminder, we've gone through this before and Miles, you can just go to sleep during this part. But the long session is held on the, in the odd number of years. It's 160 days long and its primary goal is to set, to adopt the two-year budget. The short session is 35 days in even number of years and it's, it's been around since 2010. And the purpose that was put forward at the time is emergencies, unintended consequences from bills we just passed that we need to address right away. Emergencies really kind of, we can't wait a whole year and a half to revisit these, these bills. We need to address it right away. It has turned into really just almost a free for all for some pretty major policy issues. The one thing that does limit that somewhat is a short session does have bill limitations. It kind of depends on the year. Last year it was two bills per legislator, threes per committees that kept us at around 300 bills when it was all said and done. So that's what we're heading into. I also noted that we are in the middle of a special session. So a special session can be called by the governor or two thirds of the legislature to address a critical crisis emergent issue. We are in the middle of one right now because the transportation package did not pass during the long session. There are some urgent funding needs at the Department of Transportation, including 500 plus positions within the agency that impact all manner of operations, maintenance, snowplows, emergency response, all those kinds of things. So the governor has called a special session. It started on August 29th. There was a slimmed, much slimmed down version of the bigger package that went forward. I'm happy to give you the details if you'd like, six cents gas increase, those kinds of things. There's been a delay in that process. It should have been over about a week ago. There's been the health of, of one of the legislators who is, is, we're waiting for him to be healthy again, to be able to take the vote on that package. So that is happening right now. It's very interesting. And the moment, the, also the other issue with this, with this is, as I mentioned previously, this is a short-term, small, slimmed down package. All of the stakeholders and a lot of legislators you talk to, talk about the fact that we need a long-term, more comprehensive package. All the legislators I've talked to have also said, we won't talk about that in 2026. It's a 2027 conversation. One, you don't really, it's, it's not really a mid-budget cycle kind of conversation. Two, 2026 is going to be a challenging session budget-wise. We're dealing with a revenue forecast that saw reduced amounts. We're dealing with unknown and unsurety at the federal level as far as federal funding. So it's, it's going to be more of a cuts kind of conversation. But they don't want to lift their, their vision from knowing that there are significant needs still in the transportation sector. So I say all of that to say what the current context is that we're in and we think for, oh, so that's kind of where we're at right now. We are waiting for that to be done. And the interim legislative days, going forward, we haven't had our lobby days in our short sessions because there are tight timelines, there are tight turnarounds, there's limited bills. We haven't done a lobby day during those short sessions. However, if a topic or an issue comes up for the, for you as a board, that is something we can absolutely revisit. We can also look at those interim legislative days as an opportunity to have visits as well and to cover whatever kind of topics might come up. And then one other thing that we could also be thinking about for what's next is interim communications. So what kind of cadence, what are some of the milestones, what are some of the projects, what are some of those things we want to keep our legislative delegation updated on? And you can inform me what that is. It could be, like I said, milestones or project updates. It could also be if we have an ask coming down the road, 2026, 2027, down the road, we should be feeding them information and making sure they are aware of what that issue is and informing of them now to feed that longer term conversation, that long-term ask. So, sorry, I lost my train of thought. I just wanted to go deep into transportation and talk to you about like road user charge fees and all that kind of stuff. I mean, don't get me started. I just sort of started to go down that, that road. So apologies on that. I know, you know, I meant, thanks. So any questions, anything I didn't cover, any bills that were in the long report that I put together that you'd like to go deeper on? I'm happy to cover anything you'd like.
Questions, feedback? The only thing I want to know is what is the, maybe for you, Aisha, is what's the process for us talking about what we want to communicate or share? Is that like a work session or?
Informally, I've done it at any time.
Right, right.
But we typically do bring something to you late in the year, early the next year, just to revisit the platforms to see if there's any tweaks you want to make. I think we dropped some breadcrumbs through those lobby day visits this last time around where we shared things that were coming up. We talked about the replacement bond. We talked about West Side Trail Bridge. And so if there were something that we wanted to further along, it would be totally appropriate to find some time to go down to Salem again and have those conversations. We did also at lobby days invite many of the folks we met with to let us know if they ever wanted to host an event within one of our spaces. And so we can always make that offer as well as they want to engage with their communities. We've got a lot of elected representatives down in Salem and so we, we could certainly look for opportunities to meet up with them if there's something specific you want to dive into.
Great. And I think this group, ever since I've been on the board, has always been highly engaged and familiar with all their local state electives. And I'm sure we will continue to be so, so I'm, look forward to that. Great. Thank you for being here, Kylie. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. You're letting me off very easy. When I, when I write like a 12-page report, it's amazing.
Read almost all of it, I swear.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. Okay, now we're going to move it along to the general managers' report and summer camps and events. Cynthia Guajardo, Lori Jensen, Dan McGatha. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Members of the board, staff, guests. My name is Daniel McGatha and I have the opportunity to serve and supervise the Beaverton and Aloha Swim Centers. My colleagues and I thank you for the opportunity to share enrollment, statistics and department highlights supporting our 2025 summer season. Let's talk some numbers. Summer enrollment. I am pleased to share that this summer was one of the strongest in recent years. Our overall usage for summer exceeded expectations. And in summary, we were up across the board with services offered and enrollment. I'll have you note here at 2025 drop-in attendance across all centers for the summer term. We had 119,000 patrons visit our centers. It's an 8.1% increase year-over-year. It's really exciting. Programs offered in 2025, 3,058. That's up 30% year-over-year. The primary driver for this growth was centered around an increase in our summer camps offered. A few notable camps that were offered this summer were all about Fiber Arts Camp at Cedar Hills, Owls and Owlet Camp at Jenkins, Boredom Busters Camp at the Conestoga Rec Center and Baking Boot Camp at Garden Home. This translated into 23,813 registrations, which is a four and a, almost a four and a half percent year-over-year increase compared to summer 2024. These numbers do reflect the community's trust in our programs and our staff and make Twolton Hills a destination for summer recreation. Get the opportunity to also tell you a little bit about aquatic programs this summer. Thinking out of the gate, summer was a success. If I can have you take away anything, it was safe, we were staffed and our community had fun. The aquatic division had a really highly successful summer. Swim lessons and camps were at our highest demand, were our highest demand programs this session, serving over 7,000 enrollments. Most of our centers offered half-day camps this season and I'm happy to share that Armin and Sunset tested an inclusion aid in our aquatic camps this summer with successful results. In fact, one of our own teammates who supports reception and adaptive aquatics was given the opportunity to lead that endeavor. We saw a huge increase in water fitness and fitness across the aquatic department this year. Total of 4,857 visits across all centers with 25% of those at Raleigh Park. This is a reflection to the district's commitment around health and wellbeing. We appreciate that from you. I do have a short story around that. I drug my team. Picture this on a Picture this: On last Friday in August, it's overcast, it was much cooler than normal than it had been for the summer. And I drug my team to a water fitness class. And we we got in the water and that that trainer delivered an amazing program to us. The community that was there, there were roughly forty participants in the water. And there were squirting devices and beach balls in the pool, great music. So if you want to do yourself a favor next summer, visit Raleigh Park for a water fitness class. I'll highlight our Splash District Swim Meet conducted on August sixteenth. We were represented by all seven centers at that district championship meet with one hundred and fifty-six participants. And the notable component to that was that we had nineteen parent volunteers that primarily ran that entire meet for us. So that was a great success this year. Overall, summer's twenty-twenty-five for aquatics was a season of strong participation, dedicated staff performance, and a meaningful impact on the community we serve. The success we've seen is a direct reflection of the promise from this board. So thank you. And I'd like, in conclusion, before I pass it on to my colleagues, just to share a a message from one of our patrons, just summarizing the hard work that our staff puts in each year. Morning, Dan. I wanted to take some time to express how grateful I am to have had my daughter with Zintia and as her instructor this summer. My daughter just turned three and it was her first time in the pool without a parent. I was so nervous and thought about just giving up, as many times of her not wanting to get in the water. Zintia did a wonderful job at engaging her and being patient with her. She's ending the session more comfortable getting in the pool every morning. She gets excited to come to swim lessons. So thank you for such a wonderful staff at this swim center. Their hard work does not go unnoticed. So thank you, Board. I'm going to go ahead and hand it over to my colleague.
All right. Thank you, Dan. My name's Lori Jensen, and I am going to share some of our, excuse me, I'm a program coordinator at Cedar Hills Recreation Center. And I'm going to share some highlights of summer from our recreation and from the Nature Center for the summer. Our our summer full-day camps provided all-day care. But in addition to that, this year, we also provided before and after care. And this additional option made a difference for working families who needed that extra care, extended hours to make their schedules work. So that was an important addition for the summer. And then at Cedar Hills Recreation Center, we had Hot Dog Wednesday events, and those quickly became a favorite. We, the first month that we had it, we made hot dogs and then waited to see if anyone came, you know? But quickly, we had a big line and it just became a real favorite with patrons. We had at one point, one of our campers mentioned like, but when is the next hot dog parade? So we, we got a big laugh out of that, you know? So we found that it was, people came for hot dogs, but then they stayed and they visited around the table. And and that was really special to see. And we we offered a different theme each time that we did it. We usually had an inflatable out in the field. We had line dancing. And those were free events that we put on for the community, and it was really a lot of fun. And so I imagine that we're going to to continue doing that next year. So those things also kind of launched us into a a community and intergenerational theme, I think, throughout the summer. We we had a camp cozy at Cedar Hills. And this was a brand-new teen special interest camp focused on hands-on activities. They did baking and fiber arts and yoga. Campers made candles, bath bombs, crocheted scarves, learned embroidery, made blankets, went on field trips together. Really was a big success. And at Conestoga, I want to highlight that they had a water, a aquatic sampler camp. The campers got to experience a wide range of activities and learn things that maybe they wouldn't have done otherwise or sign up for. They found that they had an interest in. They did water polo, synchronized swimming, aqua fitness, diving and swimming. And so they discovered new interests in taking that camp. I would call that a success. In addition to that, during the full-day camps, Conestoga introduced something called Mindful Mondays. I think we probably could all use a little bit of Mindful Mondays. The staff-led exercises, such as slow breathing and mindfulness for the campers, to give them practical tools that would help them in daily life, to help their regulate their emotions and find calmness. And then at the Nature Center, they hosted its first annual, this is a very exciting report, first annual Soulful Roots Campout that was made possible through THPRD's Staff Equity Grant. This year's event took place out at Oxbow Regional Park in partnership with the Beaverton Black People's Union and Friday Outdoors. And the campout was designed to connect Black families in Beaverton with nature and with each other while building confidence through hands-on camping skills in a supportive group setting. So for many families, this was their first time to be outdoors and experience camping, period. Their first time to be outside that way. And by the end of the weekend, they were confidently pitching tents and cooking outdoors and making memories together. So I think that's just an awesome program. As well as Grandparent Camp, which was expanded this summer, all the sessions of Grandparent Camp filled up. And one gentleman, a grandfather, said that he had signed up for all three camps. So that's really exciting. I mean, they're coming back three different times, right? And I think that the special thing about this camp to me was that folks were, it took place at the Nature Center and Elsie Stur. So we had grandparents coming with their kids. And then they were visiting the Elsie Stur Center some for the very first time ever. So they're stepping in the door and making a connection for like, this is a treasure for them that maybe they didn't even know about. And I think that's a really special thing that happened. And it's a way to really strengthen intergenerational bonds while bringing people into our facilities that wouldn't otherwise be there. Also this summer, the Nature Center mentored twelve Black and Green Fellowship participants and welcomed seven new interns and introduced the Allen Outlets Camp for younger children this year. And the Nature Mobile continued to be a strong outreach program, offering free nature activities at five parks and eighteen different special events throughout the district with over five thousand participants. And then finally, Big Truck Day, once again, grew a very big crowd. They had a new elongated setup, and it was a really a big hit, as well as we were really proud this year to partner with three businesses, local businesses, sponsors, to make the event possible. So we we know that summer is more than numbers, and yes, we want numbers. But it's about connection, and it's about leaving special memories of adventure and friends for our young campers and offering new experiences for all ages. And I think we did that this summer. Families came for Hot Dog Wednesday and then continued to stay and visit around the table. And communities learned to build community skills and confidence and be outdoors together in nature. And so we're really proud of the role that we play in helping our community to learn, play, and thrive. And thank you very much. And I, with that, I'll turn it over to Cynthia.
Thank you, Lori. Hello, everyone. I'm Cynthia Rhardo, the program coordinator at Garden Home. The Sports and Inclusion Department has been hard at work creating new programs and enhancing existing favorites. And I'm excited to highlight this for you all. Over at the Athletic Center, HMT hosted part of the Triple Crown Soccer World Series, and that showcased some of the best athletes from the Northwest, including some local athletes. They also partnered with three different agencies, which kept the fields full all all week. They also hosted the Pedal Run Dip All Abilities Triathlon. And with that, they had welcomed two hundred and forty-five participants, which was eighty more than the previous year. Moving over to Fitness in the Park, they ran eighty fitness and walk-with-me sessions, which draw in over three hundred and fifty community members who enjoyed accessible ways to stay active outside. Over at the Tennis Center, camps at Sunset High School saw over a hundred and sixty registrations. They also hosted eight tournaments, one of which was the week-long Oregon State Tennis Championship in July. Over at Garden Home, we increased the variety of camps we offered, which showed great success. We had new camps, which included Adventures in Songwriting, Rock the Bass, Live Action Role Play, Filmmaking Fun, Coding, and Glam Squad. We were also able to host two summer events this year. We had our Pride Picnic and we had the Canine Community Carnival, both of which had their biggest year so far. We had vendors showcasing their merchandise and services. We, at the Canine Community Carnival, were able to move our pop-up dog park up to the upper field, which really opened up the field. You can kind of see there the field. And we had vendors, we had canopies all on the field. It really made it comfortable for the owners and their animals. We also had Rec Mobile there at both events, and we had a little kitty station. We had bounce house. We had arts and crafts. We had face paint. And so kids were able to still be engaged in something while parents kind of walked around and enjoyed the vendors. So I was able to work both events. It was really great. We had consistent comments throughout, as I'm kind of all over the place, just hearing from everyone about it. And it was really great, great thing to be a part of, for sure. We also sent out a survey to the camp families there at Garden Home, and the feedback received were really positive. A lot of the parents really enjoyed the community aspect of it. A lot of the kids there were in camps with other kids from their school, others from the neighborhood. And first day of camp's always always scary. We have a lot of tears. And when they're able to see other kids that they have seen around the neighborhood or in school, it's a really good feeling, I think, for parents as well, like, I can leave them here. They are okay for the ten hours of camp that we have. So they mentioned that in the survey. They also mentioned that they felt themselves part of the community. Could have been their first week, but we greeted them by name. And I think that really connected them to the center, as well as getting the kids away from the screens. We got them outside. We got them on field trips. We got them doing some arts and crafts and engaging in things they otherwise would think is boring. And so I think that that really showed, from the parents' perspective in that survey, how grateful they were. Over with Rec Mobile Camp, we once again provided seven weeks of free camp for youth ages six to ten experiencing homelessness, living in low-income housing or qualify for scholarships. This summer, we were able to provide that camp for one hundred and twenty-two youth, which was an increase of twenty-four percent from last year. Campers there were able to enjoy games, arts and crafts, hiking, sports, and they also were able to go on field trips. So that's something great as far as being part of that to to offer them. Otherwise, they, you know, wouldn't have that experience. So very, very heartwarming there. Beyond Camp, Rec Mobile supported eighteen community events throughout the summer from June through August, including the Three Days of Central. Adaptive and Inclusion Services, they also had a strong season. Camp Riverdale offered eight weeks of programming and welcomed one hundred and seventy-eight campers, which was also a thirty-eight percent increase in registrations. Over at the Elsie Stur Center, favorites like the Lunch Trip Series and Breakfast in a Hike, they were brought back, and they were so popular, they also had wait lists. So that was amazing to see. Jenkins Estate, they also thrived this summer. The Coil Outside Camps gave the kids a chance to safely learn survival skills like shelter building, fishing, and outdoor basics. They also opened up the estate for bi-monthly historical tours for the community. And they had mentioned that that was definitely something the community wanted, and so that was a good success there. They also had a fashion design camp where they brought in a local Portland designer. And the kids were able to work together, create garments. And at the end of the week, they hosted a fashion show for their families and caregivers. Finally, we have our Diversify Intern Program, which continues to grow and make an impact. We had our interns complete DEI training. They connected with THPRD affinity groups, and they worked across the four departments, Sports and Inclusion, Recreation, Equity and Engagement, and Park Services. Bi-weekly, all of the interns came together and collaborated on goals and shared experiences. They had one standout, the Community Wellness Intern, Alina. She came in with no fitness background, but she fully embraced the community engagement. She focused on the participants' experience from the moment they hear about the programs to the moment they are in the programs. And her attention to that accessibility piece and the ability to tie that into the CAPRA accreditation process really was amazing for her supervisors to see that, and they definitely wanted us to highlight that. And that's all I have for for our Sports and Inclusion Department. That concludes, and we welcome any discussion.
Great. Thank you all so much. That was awesome, each each section. I will turn it over for any comments, questions, feedback. We got a winner here.
Thank you. Dan, Lori, Cynthia, thank you all so much. I I don't have any questions. I just have comments, and so I'm just kind of going to go down the road real quick. Dan, thank you for for talking about the year-over-year growth of our programs. It is so important to hear data like that, especially knowing the dip that we had during COVID. So it's exciting to hear how our programs are coming back and being utilized and that impact in our community. I'm so thankful for that information. Lori, I am so excited to hear about the cross-cultural and cross-generational programs that we're putting on and how those are being utilized. All those programs that you talked about, I am super excited that we, especially Hot Dog Day, will be continuing to bring those back. So thank you so much for that report out there. And then Cynthia, it was really awesome to hear about the partnerships in the programs that we're doing for accessibility for our community members that are differently abled and from different backgrounds that may sometimes be overseen. And I particularly liked the shout-out at the end there for Alina. Was that her name? Yeah, I love hearing when we get those cool little moments for someone who really shows up. And hopefully, they have a career with THPRD in the future. Thank you so much for that report.
Thank you. Miles, anyone there?
I mean, Miles said it greatly, so I'm not going to say much after that. But I just want to say just the gratitude of staff and as a parent, how important these are to making our lives continue, to growing our children. It's not just a a family thing. It's a community thing. And I think THPRD perfectly embodies that in that you guys are helping to raise the future generations. Not only that, but teach other people to continue on that legacy, which is just as important. So I just want to reiterate everything that Miles said and just give as much gratitude. Because and summer's my favorite. Like, I love, I, this is my favorite review of of the year. So I just get, I just get so excited. I get so nervous at registration, and I get, sorry.
Other comments, feedback?
I said it up top, but I'll just offer again because I didn't turn around and actually see you back there. Gratitude. Thank you. Echo the comments of my my peers. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
I think you guys will be starting to get ready for next summer, so good luck with that. We, we are going to see more registrations, more programs next summer. I'm I'm hoping for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Boy, I could hold court for a long time telling you all the little stories of summer camp, like when my son told staff that they should just call him Wolf. And they and they wrote Wolf on his name tag and and things like that. But I noticed that the innovation, the creativity in the offerings, I thought it was just as I was reading and we're trying to figure out how it was all going to work. I just thought, boy, these are really cool. There's some really cool options. Sadly, my oldest, a fifth grader, was like, wouldn't you want to do this really cool option? No. But as parents, I said, well, no, that, I I loved that it was there. And I could just see that they're, okay, this is a little bit different than I've seen in past years. And offering chances for folks to do a camp and give back to the community and things like that was really cool. So appreciated that. We attended, my mom and my son attended their first grandparent camp. And he doesn't, he didn't share all that much, but I think my mom was really struck. Her first real interaction with THPRD, she lives down in Wilsonville. So but she was just, it was such a meaningful opportunity for her to get together and have that time with him and to see him do things that she had never seen him do. And I think was really special, and I and I know that's the intent behind all those. So we had modest expectations, and I think that blew us all away. So a couple things. Big Truck Day, amazing. A lot of people don't know. So it's just a lot with a bunch of trucks. Yes, but you got to go see it to believe it. It's a rock, a rock concert. I I thought it was great. Kudos to Mackenzie for the sponsorship. I saw her the other a few weeks ago and was able to share my enthusiasm directly. We also participated in Try Together for the first time. I had a, my daughter and two other friends. If there's a way to make it a little easier for non-family members to do that together, that but staff was awesome and helped us make that happen. And they had a beautiful time working as friends to do swimming and biking and and running. And so that was great. I would love to learn more about Rec Mobile Camp, so maybe that's something we can just, when we have more time, just learn more about some of those offerings for our folks who aren't able to participate in the full center. our folks who aren't able to participate in the full center camps and, and what exactly we do. That was really interesting. So I'd love to learn more. And finally, those numbers are so great, please share them however you all feel is relevant to share. I think people love a winner and I think this, it was, this was a winning summer. And I think to feel like a little bit of pride that they were part of such a surge in participation and enthusiasm, I think is, is great for all of us who are a part of that and helps us understand all the good work that's happening in this district. So thank you. That was way more than I meant to share. I have more, but I'll move us along. Thank you all for being here. Appreciate it. Okay, we are on to our final agenda item, new business, update to the district equity and inclusion statement. Holly, thank you for joining us.
Good evening. My name is Holly Thompson. I am your communications director. And I am here this evening to talk to you and ask for your consideration for updating the district's current equity and inclusion statement. A little bit of background, the district's first equity and inclusion statement was adopted four years ago, so it was September of 2021. And staff are asking for the board's consideration to update it at this time. We appreciate that it is a very sensitive time. I want to be very clear, we are not asking for the board's consideration about this statement because of anything in the larger political context. It really started with a conversation with the district's legal counsel, where they had some advice for us that we might want to take a second look at it. And as we did, as staff kind of agreed and we said, you know, we would like to have our statement be more concise. We would like for it to be more future focused and more now focused. And we'd really like it to see it more centered on THPRD. So, so those were some of the things we were thinking about going into it. But, you know, we're part of a larger conversation and context right now and it's a difficult time. So it was really important to us as we looked at this process that we didn't take a step away from our values and that we didn't end up with a statement that weakened our position in any way. So our process was to first begin a discussion with the board of directors. I then want to thank Emily and Lulu because we had a conversation with the Equity and Engagement Advisory Committee and board member Barbie was there as well. So I, I welcome your feedback on that process. And finally, I want to thank Julie, who took the statement to our welcoming and inclusive group. That is our internal staff committee that advises the district on equity to receive their feedback as well. So my job tonight is to summarize some of what we heard and talk about how we ended up with the final version of that we've presented to you of our, the draft statement this evening. So some of the notes we took from the board discussion that it was really important to keep equity in the title. So you can see that is back in there. And it was really important that we have the accountability piece in there. There were lots of suggestions around wording substitutions and thoughts. We tried to keep those in mind and to keep the statement action oriented, which we tried to do as well. When we went to the Equity and Engagement Advisory Committee and shared the statement with them, I summarized some of the feedback that they shared with us. Members of that committee told us that they felt this version of the statement was much stronger. They felt it was more explicit. They felt that it was much firmer than our original statement, which was lovely to hear. They felt that it was profound, they liked it, they liked how it centers the individual person. They liked that it is people-centered, they felt it was strong. Thank you for adding belonging to the title, which is really was important to us. They liked that it was shorter and to the point. They said the statement made you feel like you belonged and they felt that it was future focused without having a sledgehammer, which I thought was a great comment, and someone described it as beautiful and powerful. We did ask committee members if we missed anything and if we had left anything out, if there were any vital components that should be in an equity, inclusion and belonging statement. And one member gave us a tremendous suggestion, which we immediately said yes to. And he asked us to consider adding the word safety in there, really in recognition of how marginalized communities, immigrant refugee communities are feeling unsafe at this time, unwanted, not feeling like they belonged. And we really felt that as stewards of public lands and spaces, it was incumbent upon us to follow that suggestion and add that word in there. So we were so grateful for it. We did ask Equity and Engagement Committee members if there was anything we left behind in the old statement and the version that we currently have now, as we asked for your consideration to update it. And one member noted that we didn't use the word race. So in the current statement, though, the racism is in there, it is not in this draft. One of the things we discussed with the committee members is that we still have our district values that guide us. And remember, one of our district values is leading with equity with an emphasis on racial equity. That still stands. And as we talked about this in management team and prior to the Equity and Engagement Advisory Committee, I shared with them some wisdom from our HR director where he said, you know, no one thing covers everything. You look at all these pieces and how they fit together. And we would look at that we're still leading with our values with an emphasis on racial equity and we're still talking and training and talking about why we're doing that and why that's important. The Equity and Engagement Advisory Committee felt very comfortable with that response, understood and said, move forward with the statement as you, as you've got it. When we did take the statement to, oh, I do want to share one final comment. We did get a comment from a member that specifically said that we, they thought we did a good job of being future focused and updating the statement and not carrying elements of the current one that could be problematic. So they, they could tell what we were working toward and they really appreciated it. Julie shared the statement with our internal welcoming and inclusive group. The feedback from that group was they very much liked the addition of safety and they appreciated that we had incorporated that suggestion. They also said, you're government, you're wordy, make it shorter and more concise. So they edited out of the last sentence that we had had in the statement that we took to them, feeling that it was redundant and they asked us to move the accountability piece earlier in the statement. And they really felt between the words around accountability, stewardship of public lands. They really got that sense of responsibility, that sense of action and that got them very comfortable. And they said, please don't be redundant, keep it shorter. So we respected that. And then finally, unlike the, in 2021, when I didn't think to do this, we then circled back with legal and had legal review the final version that had come through the process of all the feedback. And legal said, yep, it's fine from a legal perspective. So we signed off on legal. So with that, you have before you the updated equity, inclusion and belonging statement. I'll read it out loud for the record, but we welcome then discussion and your consideration and hope that you would be willing to adopt it this evening for the district. And the updated equity, inclusion and belonging statement as drafted reads, THPRD's goal is to serve every individual with dignity, fairness and respect. We are dedicated and hold ourselves accountable to being a welcoming and inclusive organization that lives our values by advancing equity, inclusion, fairness, belonging and respect for all. As stewards of public lands and spaces, we are committed to keeping these spaces safe, accessible and bringing people together. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Holly. We will see who has comments, feedback. Don't all jump? Oh, Miles.
I love it. I, I'm really happy with where we've landed. I'm really appreciative of the feedback from all of the community partners, both internally and externally that was sought out. It's always great to hear that legal is okay with something. But yeah, I am, I'm really thankful. I am interested in hearing from Barbie, especially having be our, our new liaison to the Equity and Inclusion Committee.
Don't toss it to me yet because I, I want to hear from my peers too. I can, I'm happy to share my point, but I, I want to make sure I hear my peers too.
Thank you for all the updates and stuff. I, I like it. I, I do, I think it does our message that we wanted to, it embodies the message that we're trying to do with our other statement. And I am, I'm thankful for our advisory groups for weighing in and it's just another reason why it's important to have advisory groups and that they're not just there to get information, but they are there to affect the district and help build something for the district. So I just want to call out our advisory committees for bringing in those great suggestions and just to exemplify the great work that they do and the importance that they do. But I am supportive of it.
I love it as well. I just want to call out, I like the accountability piece there. And I like that you have moved it up to make sure that it's concise. And I also like the stewardship he's connecting back to safety just because of the offerings that we have indoors and outdoors. I think it's very important to have safety in there. And it's actually refreshing to see safety in the statement here. So thank you for doing that.
I'll jump in on, on that part. I think if I'm tying back to our equity and engagement community members and Holly did, you did a fantastic job of, of recapping. I would say to just add some color commentary, the reactions of such various different viewpoints and the discussion that was had and, and the immediacy of which those words of this is powerful, this is strong, I feel more like that this actually has greater power and impact than what was before, certainly shifted my mind. I think you all know I was, I think probably a person who was a bit more concerned and the words that I had used were, where's our boldness? And I felt that we were stepping away from some of that boldness and I think it just looks different. I think it's, it's still bold. And there, there was not really any dissension, if you will. It was more so the conversation and to your point, I definitely feel that the concerns or the, let's add in safety and dialogue were very much heard and represented in the, in the next iteration. So again, I echo Director Ping in terms of thanking our, our folks and our volunteers who really do help us shape from lenses that are not sitting here at, at the board. And especially with that view of you're just reading it for the first time. I have had time to metabolize, right? So to hear that first impression, what are you getting when you just read it on the paper was very validating for me. I think personally, the only component that still hung up a little bit, and so since this is our moment of discussion, I, I question our last sentence where we say, we are committed to keeping these spaces safe, accessible and bringing people together. The word keeping to me, I've, I've tried to do the Google search and the thesaurus and how could, could, could we wordsmith? And I know that we're, we're moving towards wanting to potentially approve this. There's something about that to me that indicates status quo, that indicates we are committed to doing this thing and we're going to keep us here. And it loses the bit of aspiration for me. And so in thinking of future forward, you know, not every one of our space equals accessible when we think of what that word can mean. And so I just offer that as a point of, of consideration. I don't know if our wordsmiths over here, if that registers with my peers, but I do think a statement like this would be helpful to include something aspirational. We know we have work to do to make this a reality. And when I see the word keep, it makes me feel that we're saying, we did, we've done it, we're, we're good. And so that's my only concern that I have with, with the draft as presented tonight.
Thank you very much for your feedback. I, I appreciate all the work that went into this. Certainly not in a vacuum of, of conversation and rhetoric. So Julie and Holly and everyone who had a hand in this, please, the effort is immense. So we had one, two, three, four groups, if you count legal and ourselves, who fed into this. We talked a little earlier about process, process matters. And I think in this case, you saw the intentionality to go to the external advisory committee. And thank you Barbie for being there and being, I'm sure robustly engaged there and having the internal welcoming and inclusive group give their thoughts. I mean, I'm just really proud of the process that we can reach a place while it may not be 100 out of 100 maybe. And I think certainly we have a right to come back and, and review it again, you know, I think. But I think for where we went and the, the need to protect the district in terms of, of liability and things of that nature, I, I think we've made some really excellent changes. And I, I like the statement as is, while certainly noticing and noting and appreciating the comments from Director Minor about some of the words that may have been a little bit chosen differently and, and why, understand, understand that point. So that's my two cents. At this point though, I, oh, yep. Yeah, I'm done.
Holly, can we change keeping to making?
Well, I mean.
Well, I don't know how that like affects like our vote and stuff, or, or if that works. I'm not a wordsmith, but to.
I think if you made a motion to approve with an amendment to wording, we could approve it tonight with an amendment to wording. But I'm going to defer to my colleague Jessica Collins, who is much better at the keeper of the rules and tell me if that's okay.
Well, I don't even know if that's the right word. I was just like throwing it out there as an option to making.
My, respectfully, my, my concern there is, is we, we find ourselves back to some of the issues we had with the original statement. Correct. That's my concern there, although like I do see what Director Minor has pointed out. And she's right, words do matter. Action also matters and I am confident in the action of, of the Parks District and how we have shown up in this space, not just in current years, but in, in the years leading up to this moment in the discussions. I know I'm only two years in on here, but I'm really proud of, of my colleagues who have been here longer. And yeah, I, I think that with where we're at here, I, I am comfortable with, with keeping, keeping.
And I don't want to rush us to, to a vote if we still have things to talk about. So I, I will say I'm not in favor of kind of editing on the fly here, so.
You know, if, if you'll forgive me, I think there's two things about my job I really don't like. One is trying to schedule a meeting because calendar management with multiple people is just so hard. And I avoid trying to be the one scheduling meetings at all times. And the second is the final stages of any editing process. I, and I think it's because I'm an impatient person. But through the work of working on the poll over the last couple of weeks, I've been in a lot of nitpicky word, get it right discussions. I'm reminded of a debate Doug and Aisha and I have this week on the word improve and how we interpret the word improve differently. And how I think improve is just make something better. And they hear improve and think it's focused on new, not necessarily, you know, like taking care of fixing things that need to be fixed. So that being said, I really felt like I heard something different from your interpretation of the word keeping. I, I didn't read that to mean, it means that they already are that way. I read it to mean, it's like we're ensuring, we want to keep it this, you know, we want to make sure they're safe. We want to keep them safe, we want to keep them accessible and that's the striving goal, which I know now striving is a word I won't use with y'all. So all that to say, I know I'm supposed to be an expert in communications. I don't really ever think there are like the 10 magic words that make something perfect. I think the magic comes in how we communicate it, how we talk about it, how we train on it and how we embody and live it. And I think what you see in our work across the district on equity and you've seen so much of it tonight from the summer rec program to the proclamation example is we know we are doing well and at the same time, we know we have a long way to go. And so I think both things can be true and I think we will always, we're not going to be the people going, we got that done. And I think we will always, we're not going to be the people going, we got that done. We're always going to be talking about what more we need to do, who else needs to be included, who else is missing, and how we can do better. So I hear you. I validate what you see. I think it's about how we embody and we carry it out.
Thank you, Holly. Comments here?
Yeah, I I think personally for me, I I have read the previous one and I've heard some of the discussions. And I do agree with the statement that the word keeping is probably causing a little bit of a, you know, like a past tense feel or done feel. Although I do want to acknowledge the effort that went into putting this together. And the wordsmithing is never easy. And not trying to be nitpicky, but the ing in the keep to me shows like continuous improvement, so to speak, right? Like, I feel like that is present tense, which something that I think personally like I can live with. I do feel like it does show like it is an ongoing thing that we want to keep doing. And again, like Miles pointed out, this is not an easy process. And words are, you know, obviously interpreted differently by different people. So personally, I I think we have done a done a good job to embody like the big picture, including like the legal requirements to get the statement to where it is right now. So that's.
Thank you. Any other comments? I think I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve.
Adopt. Sorry. I'd like to make a motion. I move that the Board of Directors adopt the proposed Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Statement.
I second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Jessica, would you please take a vote?
Tia Ping?
Yes.
Barbie Minor?
Yes.
Pradhan Patel?
Yes.
Miles Plasius?
Yes.
Alfredo Moreno?
Yes. Thank you, staff. Thank you, board. Good discussion. And we are adjourned for tonight.